To be on time.
I know, I know.
All right, we're good to go.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting in the Bath Township Mining Commission to order. It's March the 26th, then it's a couple of minutes after six. Everybody read the agenda? Anybody got any additions or corrections?
Move to accept the agenda as written.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Support.
And we have a support. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Anybody have any conflict of interest that they want to disclose tonight? Hearing none? Move on to public comments. Sir, would you like to address the planning commission?
Oh, yes. Did you want me to do that now, or?
If you'd like to, yes.
This is.
Well, it depends on what the... I'm sorry. Go ahead, gentlemen.
He's here for an item tonight, John.
Oh, oh, all right. An item that's on the agenda. Oh, all right, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that, sorry. The minutes of March the 12th. And you wanna do these as separate items, or?
Separate.
Separate, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Jason, you had something you wanted to comment about?
So are we doing the March 12th minutes first?
Yes.
Yep. So, no, I do not have any comments on this one.
Anybody got any comments about March 12th?
No. Move to accept the minutes as written and mark for March 12th.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of March... of January the 23rd.
I'll just say real quick before we go into that, it was brought up last meeting that there was a editing error in the minutes and that that didn't make its way to the board. We tried to fix that error as we understood it, but I don't know if we achieved that, so just... I just wanted to... Okay, we didn't, okay. That's fine.
So, the... There was one vote related to the minutes. And that vote was an agenda item.
Okay.
And so, what happened in the revision of the minutes was that you moved the comments... They were supposed to be under, I think, old business B or new business B. And they got lumped into sidewalk ordinance discussion. So the intent there was to have it as a standalone agenda item.
Okay.
All right, the other comment there is, I'm not quite sure, I think I understood what trustee Hagerman was trying to communicate, but I don't think that was... described all that well in the minutes.
Okay, so when we made our edits last week after the last meeting, we made this its own item, draft sidewalk ordinance, and then we called out all the information?
So the draft sidewalk ordinance had... was on the original.
Okay.
Agenda, and so I think we moved that to C.
Okay.
And B would have been concerns about sidewalk maintenance.
Okay.
So trustee Hagerman, I think what's quoted here is, "Miss Hagerman discussed the building of these new sidewalks. Implantation of new rules could be easier to be handled by the community compared to before with the addition of these new sidewalks." I don't quite think that captures what you were trying to communicate.
That was quite exactly what I was trying to communicate.
I have a recollection, if you don't mind me sharing that.
Sure.
Not to speak on your behalf, historical behalf.
I believe I made an analogy to moving into my new high school and locking down the rules.
Yeah.
At that point in time.
So the intent being that's a total enforcement of the sidewalk ordinances might be too big of a lift for the community and that municipal involvement might be warranted after a long period of time of not enforcement.
Right. That moreover is that this was the point in time to do it now that we're getting the new sidewalks.
Yeah.
So that sort of could be the catalyst for change in behavior and enforcement.
Okay, so we need to make B the new item which was added... the agenda was amended to add a new B. We need to make the current B C, and we need to more accurately capture Miss Hagerman's comments.
Yes.
Okay. We will work to do that, and what we'll probably do this time is, if you guys wouldn't mind just sending out our draft to trustee Hagerman and yourself and just letting us know if we've captured what you want.
And I do have one comment about the minutes from March 12th.
I do, too. I missed that. I missed.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
Just under the community profile presentation, it says the planning commission gave criticism of the presentation.
Yeah, I caught that, too.
And I just wanted my sentiments to reflect that they weren't intended as criticism. I think anything that we may have said, other than perhaps constructive criticism, but I think feedback might be a less...
I put down a comment.
Loaded word to use.
Feedback is fine. Cade wrote the minutes. He did the presentation. He probably internalized something.
That... Well, that was why I wanted to make sure that I clarified that our comments, at least I certainly can't speak for anybody else, but certainly I know the comments that I made were not intended to be critical more than just... other than just a feedback.
I didn't... By the way, on staff's side, we didn't take it that way either. I think this was excellent feedback, and we're gonna try, as we do those data analysis in the future, take some of that into our consideration, so it's very helpful.
So do I need to do something with the motion for the 12th?
Before you do that, I got another comment on those. That's what they were... Latest one with the... I can get back to you. March 12th.
We'll change that from criticism to feedback, though.
Okay, okay.
I've got one real quick. It's just a spelling. It's my name. He's got Kramer under the HDI development, new business A.
Yeah, sometimes our...
Six.
Your name is so close to our previous year. Sometimes our Microsoft Word might just auto-correct it for us.
It's under adjourned as well.
Yeah.
The comment I had under new business, HDI, they have Chris's last name wrong. It's not Rodney, it's Drogny.
Okay.
D-R-O-B-N-E-Y.
D-R-O-B.
N-E-Y, Drogny.
All right. So criticism to feedback, change Kramer.
Yeah.
And then...
And old business had one more thing, too.
Okay.
That... Under eight, A8.
Okay, I'm on it.
Mr. Hagerman, he discussed the possibility of utilizing mileages within Bath. I think it's supposed to be millages.
Millages, sure.
Thank you.
I don't think he said mileage.
No, no, I don't think so either.
That's all I had.
All right.
So now I can amend the motion?
That'd be great.
Yes, amend it.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to with the fixes of the comments made.
Great.
And hopefully Ray will second it.
I will amend my second to second again.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I love that everybody had just a little bit different look at it, and...
Yeah.
Thank you, Miles, for pulling it up as they went through that. That was helpful, and I really enjoyed all that. I know it seemed simple, but I did. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Appreciate the thermos.
So we're gonna amend the January minutes and bring them back again, Miles?
Yeah, it sounds like it. I would like if the planning commission members would allow us to send out. That way we can get it right.
Absolutely. I don't have any objection to that whatsoever. Do you have any communications you wanna share with us?
None at this time.
And old business.
All right.
I think this is probably Alexi or Miles.
It's a Lexi one.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Okay, we're circling back after a couple of months. So we're bringing back the tree ordinance, just basically wanted to talk about it, get some of your input. I tried to make it more simple than the last time, so if you have any input, you see any sections that you would like to be built out, I would love to hear feedback on that. The highlighted in yellow portions are still up to your discretion, whatever you as like a commission think is best. And then the ones in green are, there's a section about legal counsel and just kinda giving you another option, if that's what you would all like to go for. And if you don't have any, like, adjustments at this time, you can always send me a copy through my email. Miles can give it to you all, and I could go through those at another date. That's easier as well.
Yeah, we're not looking for action at this point. We're just... This is more of our discussion phase, just trying to build out this ordinance. We know this has a large effect, so it's one that we wanna get right. We don't wanna brush this for sake of being it to the board to have some kind of negative effect on township.
The first green one, I'm not much sure exactly what was saying there.
Jason, has he?
Under applicability.
Yes.
So last time we talked about it, there was some contention about if we want this to pertain to just commercial districts, residential. So another option would be applicable by district, so we could do like, you know, District D, heavy, high density development or low density development, instead of just saying commercial or residential. It was another way to kinda bracket it off. If you would like that better, or we can keep it as just commercial.
The concern I've had, by leaving out residential, what I'm afraid we might be doing, if somebody wants to come in and do a large 50-unit residential development, is that considered commercial or not? Because the concern I've got, they come in, they wipe down the entire 50-acre site, well, it's gonna be residential, so it doesn't apply.
Is the 50-acre, I guess I would ask a caveat question, is the 50-acre, let's say 50 parcel, one acre parcels with 50 homes on it, are they going to be homes that will be for sale, or are they gonna be like for rent as a part of a multifamily development?
Why does it matter?
Because if it's for rent as a multifamily development, it'll be commercial. If it was like a planned unit development for individual sales, then it would fall in the category of residential. So I'm just trying to elaborate how we would make that distinction.
I think it should cover both. Any large development like that, I mean...
What if we said anything that requires the review of the planning commission? Because then that would cover both in that case.
Yeah, okay. But that may be... That may work.
But it won't cover a single-family home who's just trying to develop on a single parcel, kind of independent builder.
Yeah. Well, I guess an example would be what's happening out at Hawk Hall now around that senior court area. That was developed, it's got subdivisions in it, and I mean, it's all laid out with lots.
Yeah.
There was not a tree touched until about a month ago. Now they're starting to build homes in there, and they're going in and basically clearcutting individual lots before they start building the house. Well, it's at least in one case, and I think some others, they've cut down trees that didn't need to be cut down.
I noticed that, too, and I think maybe it was the person that was buying the house, maybe they didn't like that tree there or something, you know?
It could be.
I thought the exact same thing.
Yeah, 'cause that one, they did cut that one down late.
Yeah.
But the ones they're cutting down now, they're going in, they're basically...
I... See, that's the difference, Miles. He's speaking about like after the parcel's sold, you know, the whole parcel would say is be 50 acres, but these are like half or one acre parcels, and then they're clearcutting them.
Here's the problem. That's a really like nuanced example, and I like that example because it... We do this internally a lot when we're trying to write these ordinance, like, whoa, what about this situation? And it's hard because in planning, as you generally know, and Kate's already excluded us, as everyone here knows, it is difficult because the what-if scenarios are boundless. I mean, almost anything can happen. And the scenario you're talking about, I do get into that weird line that we're trying to walk, where we want to place restrictions for the betterment of the whole community, but we don't wanna infringe upon the rights of private property owners.
Right.
And if somebody comes in and they build an $800,000 house, and they say, yeah, I don't like that tree, I don't know if that... And I'm... I don't know... I don't hold any position, I'm agnostic personally about this, I don't care really, but I don't know if that is like the local government's moral authority to say, no, you can't do that. I understand as an HOA, you guys have a view on the amount of trees that you want, but I think that's something where HOAs have a lot of authority to handle, and I'd rather the HOAs handle it at their scale. I don't wanna obfuscate us of our duty, but there is a difference between a government entity saying, no private property owner, you can't cut down trees, and an HOA saying it because they're fundamentally different organizations. And there's different moralities around that, George.
Yeah, I think the individual lot thing is tough.
It's tough. Now, I think we're much more like when the Ace Hardware comes in and we're reviewing the landscaping plan, I think we're much in connection to a special use permit, I think the nexus of what we're requiring, we're much more on solid legal authority and solid just norms in the development industry. So that's why I've always kind of, I feel safer over there than I do over where we go sometimes.
George has something.
So I'll speak up on behalf of my own feelings, is that I don't... It's my lot. I don't want that tree there. I don't want that tree there. Now, I understand that, let's say there's a tree that's 200 years old or whatnot, and people wanna try to save that tree. I can see that side of things, but I struggle with examples of you telling me I have permission to have my lot that I let grow for 30 years, and now I wanna cut it down because I wanna do something else with it. I bought it. If I don't like the house next to me, maybe I better buy that property so they don't build on it. That's kind of my attitude a little bit. But example I have is like the theaters. You have the theaters that have not been in operation for years. It's overgrown. If they come before this board and said, look, we wanna develop the property, well, what about the impact of the animals that are there right now? We know that there's animals in there, birds, all kinds of birds, who knows what's in there? Probably a lot. They probably made that their home. And now I can't clear it. It's all blacktop. We'd probably say, go ahead and clear it, develop it. I mean, I'm imagining that we would, but none of them trees, they're all not that old. All them trees that were on the lot that Ace Hardware on, they're not... They haven't been grown for, you know, 500 years. They've only been grown for 50 years or 60 years. And so, and like at farm, farmers have fields that haven't been turned. They'd love to have them turned, but they don't have a farmer to do them, or... So then they get overgrown. So now, do I have to come get a permit to have a whole field of Alm, Russian or Alm Alles removed? You're probably gonna say, okay, but I don't think that I need to come before some government agency saying, can I clear my own field? And now I gotta pay a fee to do it. So I struggle with that.
The other part that I worry about, just from the staff perspective, too, and I know like Lexi sees this because she's helping me with all of this every day, it's capacity, too. So like, there's... We have to have mechanisms in place to allow us to enforce these rules. If we do it as a part of the development process, and we have a very clear, like, if you come to us for a development, as Mr. Esch drew this tonight, you know, he comes pre-application meeting, step one, then this is step two, this is step three. If we have even, you know, a PUD and we put standards, and we have to make sure they're standard, which I could see an argument of how we could analyze this on PUDs, but it becomes this enforcement game that we'll have to play, and that becomes difficult, too, 'cause even in the Hawk Hall, we're probably gonna get a phone call, giant tree being cut down. By the time we get there, a tree's gonna already be down, if not in process. And like, what do we do from there? Then we're... Now we're leveraging legal counsel to help us litigate tree issues, and I don't know if that is wise either.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I know, and I brought up the individual lot thing, and that really doesn't concern me as like a lot. Bugged me a little bit, but the biggest one was if we get this big lot, well, go back to the Hawk Hall, before they subdivided that, if somebody committed, clear cut their whole loop in there, and then subdivided, that would concern me.
Yes, yeah, I think that is problematic, and I think we could... That's why I think we could say something, 'cause Lexi presented a good... Our original thing was, okay, commercial and residential. Then we talked about the nuances of that, and you're right, there could be gaps and loopholes in there. She's presenting, oh, you could go by district as well, that'd be one method. I'm saying, we could... Anything that requires a site plan review would require a clear cutting. So that would address that. So at least you hold them from clearcutting the whole 100, 100-unit PUD. Now, they're still gonna come back over time and clear, but at least then there's planting and there's some saving of trees, and it's phased in over time, so it's not like a whole 100 acres is clear cut at once, and now we have some kind of massive drainage issue.
And I can see George's concern, too, in farmlands, is like, yeah, this farmer's... He did farming this whole thing, now it's not gonna grow over, now he wants to expand his growable crops. Does he have to get a permit to do that? I don't think he should have to.
That's covered under agriculture, so that probably wasn't the best example, but...
He was speaking in relation to being zoned commercial only. That wouldn't... That would not even apply to farming land.
But we discussed it. I would love to hear what you have to say, Jason.
I'm being patient.
He's biting his tongue over here.
Okay, so, George, I mean, I fundamentally agree with you and feel the same way. I... But you said something that triggered me, not in a bad way, but I... It reminded me of how I ended up on the planning commission to begin with. And so, there's a current planning commission member who made a comment to my public comment related to a mining operation, and the comment was, if you don't like what's going on across the street from you, why don't you... Why didn't you buy the property?
Right.
The thing that bugged me about that is, what's the point about planning commission? Or doing planning if that's the way the municipality is going to move forward with planning? I'm not saying that was your intent, 'cause I know that's not your intent.
Right, right.
But words are... Can be kind of dangerous.
Sure.
And so, I would just caution on making statements along those lines. And that's why this job is so exciting, because it's complicated, and you have community members here who can leverage their experience in the community to talk about, this is what we actually see in our community. Sometimes it's a one-off, sometimes we know that that's just our community, and so our pockets of our community. And so, I think this is a great ordinance. I think there's lots of opportunities to do some tweaking and adjustments. None of us are gonna be happy at the end if it's approved, but perhaps we can, you know, narrow the scope as a starting place for its approval to very specific circumstances, and if it works, then revisit it in the future in terms of expanding it to additional districts or uses.
I appreciate you saying that, too, because hopefully with that kind of long-term vision you just laid out, capacity wouldn't be such an issue, because over time, hopefully capacity will increase. But just for Lexi's sake, because she does have to do the work and write some stuff here, we basically have three options on the table, and we're trying to get a sense of which option we'd like, so we can go by commercial or residential, we can go by districts, or we could go by items that would have to come before this body is the three options I think we'd weigh out.
So... Go ahead, George.
As I heard you discussing a few minutes ago, being attached to like a PUD, that seems more logical than just saying, I can't do whatever I want with my property. I can kind of get that, because it's coming... It's coming before you. Right, but I understand also that, like Ray said, you know, people can come and rip their property down before they even come to that point. That's... That's... There's mechanisms in this to prevent that. That's what we're actively working towards. You would have to secure a permit, so even if, let's say a PUD, they know they wanna come to Bath. They haven't even approached us for a pre-application meeting, but they did buy 100 acres, and they're looking to clear land. This ordinance will require them to come to the clerk's office and get a clear cutting permit even prior to the pre-app meeting. If they fail to do so, they will be fined.
So is that different than me if I had 80 acres and I wanted to clear cut it?
Under any of these three options that we just laid out, you're the situation of you, a private landowner with 80 acres, you don't fall into any of these. You're good. You go ahead and clear 80 acres.
Is that because it's...
Because he's a private landlord. He's not... He's not trying to develop anything, he's not commercial.
So if somebody lived on this property and then decided to develop it, they could clear cut it.
That would be the one loophole we could incur, but as I'm saying, there's...
So probably not very likely.
Yeah, you have to weigh out it...
I would say that that loophole actually might be taken advantage of, and so I think one way of addressing that is that clear cut property cannot be approved for PUD within a certain period of time, like, say, a one-year period.
Yeah.
Just to capture that without incurring the penalties retroactively.
Will you say that again? Should I write it down? Sorry.
No, I... In order to capture the possibility that a private landowner clear cuts property ahead of selling for commercial development, putting in a restriction that a PUD will not be considered by the planning commission within one year of evidence of clear cutting within the scope of this ordinance, unless the PUD applicant, I encourage the penalties. Does that sound reasonable? Or is okay by the commission?
That's a great fix, I think. And I was gonna say, your fix kind of led into where my thought was going to, which is like, if somebody was to exercise this loophole, well, then they would have to come before this body for a special use permit, which you have wide latitude to throw conditions on. So they... It'd be like shooting yourself in the foot and then trying to drop somebody.
Yeah. Another example about one person doing this, not in relation to this, but in relation to annexing land, that has happened in another township where one... Nobody lived on the land at all, but somebody moved in, the owner's son, moved in and said, I'm having problems. And so, because the only people that can vote on the land are the people who live there. Well, there's one vote.
Right. Yep, I remember that situation.
With almost Costco?
Yeah.
Yeah. Famous one, famous around here.
Yeah. But I like... I think your idea, though, everything that comes before, that has to come before this body is covered. I like that option.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we like that option, we're taking in Jason's picks, 'cause I think even though they have to come to you, that shouldn't prevent us from putting good language in there. I think that's wise.
My next big question is in the permit required section about how much would require a permit, but that can also now change, 'cause now if we're changing it to anything that requires a type plan review, obviously you just take that as it goes?
Yeah, you could do that, or you could still spell, like, if it's a particularly small development, like Bigby Coffee was, like, do you really want them to come in for a permit?
Right.
It's like 10,000. So I guess I don't see a downside of still like opting out significantly small parcels, like a half acre or less.
Yeah.
Instead of like what we're doing now, which is opting in larger parcels, which is opt out smaller parcels.
Mm-hmm. This is gonna sound weird, but what if it's a really skinny, long parcel?
Well, we'll measure by like half an acre, so if even it's... Even let's say it's 100 acres, but it's only like 20 feet wide, some crazy parcel, they'd still have to...
The screaming of trees, right?
They'd still have to come in because they'd still be over that half an acre, however it's measured. Do we like half an acre?
It's pretty small.
It's pretty small.
That's gonna capture anybody.
Okay, so what do we... What does this body feel? Is it good?
I don't have a problem with it being that small. I don't have a problem with it being that small. That comment that I was trying to get in, you're trying to do it by district, but if you do it by the half acre, you don't need to discuss anything.
Well, we're, I think we've decided we're not gonna do it by district, we're gonna do it by anything that's come before this body.
That's what the permit requirement states, that anybody trying to clear a half has to come get a permit and the planning commission will review.
I I kind of like half acre, because even though that does sound small, you can put, you can put a commercial facility on a half acre for sure. Anything more than that, I think we get into the intent of this ordinance, which is prevent people from clear-cutting wide swaths of land.
Well, how are you gonna differentiate between timber harvesting and clear-cutting then?
That's a good point. These are good points. Yeah, that's what we're discussing.
What's the difference, John?
I might have two large trees on my half acre and that's all I got, so I'm gonna cut them because they're good for timber or.
But that wouldn't be, it it'd still have to be associated with a planned unit development, right? Or some, so you would, that would be on your private land.
But you're a farmer at that point.
Well, that might be just a residential property owner.
It still wouldn't fall within this.
I could buy a half acre out in rural Bass someplace and decide, yeah, there's a couple of nice trees on there, you're gonna make veneer. And I could get a grand a piece out of them, so I'm gonna come down.
Yeah, I don't think you fall under this, but I think we should do a better job of defining what is clear-cutting. Versus what what's just brush clearing for fire.
Which I thought he did a pretty good job, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I can also add, just like another clause, is like specifically write that out, like what is.
And even in his case, he wouldn't be able to develop it for, because we got that little captured device.
Under exceptions, I, what if there's a situation where I, the parcel has diseased or dead trees? Would that be something that we would force them to seek a a tree clearing permit?
No, I think that's a good one.
Where's that at in the?
It's not. Well, it's seventy-eight dash forty.
Exceptions, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying it would be a good one to add to exceptions. I think that's wise.
I I agree.
Disease tree, yeah.
Especially today.
Well, there's a lot of pines that are getting, yeah.
Neil drop?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And they're large, some of them.
So we might encourage people to take before and after pictures of their stuff?
That's the nuance, or I guess like, we're, we are trying to not go too deep dive down into like requiring a ton of documentation and a ton of inspections. Because each document that has to be reviewed takes time, needs inspection, has to be performed, takes time. And that's the time we don't have.
Or not getting paid for, hence our fee schedule.
Yep.
The last line on uh, there's just, I think it's, it says, fair to obey, I think it just says bay. That's the last line in the blue, last page.
Oh, yeah, my bad.
Oh, to bay, yeah, that's it. That's like, yeah.
Yeah, on that note, those fines will be reviewed by legal, so like the last ones. Um, but the one that we can talk about in penalties and enforcement is, we discussed this last time, but we never came to a clear consensus. About having a civil penalty of when you like clear the land and then, you know, then we find out about it after what will happen monetarily. So we had the idea of you could replant trees in order to make up for some of that monetary compensation. Is it still something we're looking at doing or just keeping it just financial?
We need to look at this, how how large a penalty we want to, because it's ten dollars per square yard doesn't sound like a lot until you start saying. That's forty-eight thousand acre.
Right.
Yeah.
And the trees, we say one tree for every, what is it, ten square yards? That's two hundred and eighteen trees per acre.
Right.
That's a lot of trees.
Yeah, we had those highlighted, because obviously we think those numbers need some adjustment. But at the end of the day, it's kind of one of those like just subject or, yeah, subjective calls.
Yeah, those are taken from the municipalities surrounding us. That is the rate for like Williamston and other municipalities. So I did, but we can always change that. I mean.
Yeah, and that's why we tried to build into like an opt-out method where it's like, okay, you can pay us forty-eight thousand dollars, or you can recede this property. Which one you want to do? Obviously, they'll recede, which gets us to the whole objective of the ordinance, which is not to make money, it's to have green space and grow.
Green space.
That makes sense, yeah.
So what what is the probability of a three-inch tree surviving to maturity?
There's not. That's what we, I wanted to ask you all, is do you want there to be like a clear tree? Or do you want it to be like of planning commission approval again? Like you have to come in and then you guys look at the site plan of like the landscape, the landscape plan and having to review it? Or just something clear-cut in the ordinance, this is what you'll plan?
So, I mean, here's where, the three-inch thing just like ruffled my feathers in. I I can see someone just planting, you know, three-inch white oaks. I and, you know, it'd be eighty years before you'd have the screening that the intent is. And so, so I I would want to make sure that that replaced, whatever's being replaced.
Yeah.
Has the probability of achieving what the intent of the ordinance is, which is. I it's, it sounds like screening, right?
How would you word that, though? Because I struggled with that very thing that you just said in my brain.
Yep.
We can work on it. We don't need, it's not something I necessarily think we need reporting tonight. We might even get with, we have some contacts at Michigan State uh that do kind of their landscaping and um kind of their maintenance uh of of green spaces for them. And maybe contact them and see what they think here.
Maybe not specifying, you know, a number of trees or size, size of tree, but maybe a plan that goes before the planning commission of remediation, whatever the word is. Um, remediation. Thank you. I'm not good with words.
That sounds like more forestry to me than it does landscaping.
Well, I mean, we've, I mean, part of the landscaping ordinance is is that we review plans, right?
Right.
Uh, and we we look at not just the plan, but also, you know, what is the plan achieving within that space? And that seems like something that would be more effective in meeting, I think, the needs of the aggrieved neighboring parcels. So I mean, that's just something to consider.
Yeah, and I guess if if we are in this scenario where they have now clear-cut and now they have to remediate, they're likely before you guys anyways. Because my original thought was, I want to bring a developer in to remediate this and then bring them back at the next meeting, but we could probably do both in one meeting. Because again, I'm just trying to think about time and staffing and putting too much onus on the developer to create it. So no one ever wants to do business in that township again. Yeah, or you guys yourself and what our agendas, and we're already going two hours, three hours every meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll work on that.
Yeah, thank you. And if you have any more comments, but you want to just like, you think of it in your head, you can always email me and then I'll just have it and work on it.
Can I, can I press real quick, though, Lexi? What do we think? Because we said ten dollars is high. That's what we've seen from some other ordinance, but obviously the ordinance, people that have this type of ordinance are in better, more affluent areas than necessarily Bath is.
What do you mean better?
I do more affluent, I'm thinking of Ann Arbor. They're different. I don't, I don't know if I'd use the word better. Um, sorry about that to everyone. But they're more affluent. I mean, they, the developers working there have bigger pockets than they would here. Um, they have more staff to pursue these things. They probably have a better legal counsel budget than we do, or a bigger legal counsel budget than we do. Um, so I can see that ten dollars being problematic for us.
It'll slow people down. Well, and isn't that what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
I I guess I would, I would ask first, are we trying to set that monetary amount per square, per square yard for a deterrent? Or as a penalty?
Yeah, I mean, it's always to be a deterrent.
If it's a deterrent, then I think ten, ten dollars per square yard is fine. And it does two things. Deters initial uh non-compliance, but then it's I also incentivizes the remediation.
All right, cool. Okay, we'll, we'll roll with that for now, and obviously, we're not taking action, so it's gonna come back. We'll keep it highlighted as a point to know.
I would, I would just like one more comment, is that, is I would like to avoid uh having to hire an arborist or someone to work on these every time we had something before us.
Yep.
It would, try to keep it in-house and manageable.
Okay, in that, in that remark, in this, my closing comment, a three-inch autumn blaze maple grows like crazy. We planted one five years ago and it's this big around now.
One thing, we were saying about three, we ought to say three inches breast tight or something like that.
Uh, this was actually three inches and it was twenty feet high.
Yeah. Now, I was saying, in in our ordinance, it says three inch, a three-inch diameter tree.
We should define.
Where are you gonna measure that? You're gonna measure that at sixteen inches out of the ground?
Uh, it's usually four feet above the ground.
Breast tight, yeah, four feet.
We'll identify that. That's, I think, the people, our contacts at Michigan State will help us identify, like what's the industry standard.
That's the industry standard.
I was doing a three-inch tall tree.
I was at the town meeting this morning on the solar panels.
Oh, you did go to that?
I did go to that. I went on behalf of the Baskel Museum and ended up staying for the solar panel meeting. Uh, but they were defining their trees by height and they settled on a four-foot tree for replanting.
For remediation.
As a buffer.
Well, actually, we, when we were reviewing this and we went to a sort um kind of uh meeting, you know, with everyone from around the state of what's going on. And they brought in some tree experts, and that's a big point of conversation right now, is the buffering and tree species choices. So we could probably extract actually some good language from what they're looking at in those lenses.
My question just was, do you want it that specific? You know, that was like my question to you all, because we can build this out or we can keep it at, you know, at reviewed by the plant commission, period, you know?
I I like it the way it is, nice and tight.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think they needed to, Jason's point, that's gonna be a three-inch diameter tree, three inches high.
And 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 it needs to be determined whether or not it's deciduous, coniferous, or something of that nature, because.
I don't want brad for pears.
I mean, it takes eight years for a tree to get big enough for, to be a Christmas tree, you know, if it's a conifer.
We'll put in some general guidelines to try to keep it like somewhat, uh, so the developer knows what to expect and what the body's looking for. But then we'll leave it to come back to you guys to review as a part of that remediation process. All right, was that?
Yes, thank you. It was very helpful.
Okay, great, good. We want to move on to the fee schedule then?
I'm good with moving on if you are, chair for me.
Yep, does anybody else got anything they want to say about the tree cutting?
All set.
Let's move on with the fee schedule.
Okay, so we brought this last time. I think we had like two editing mistakes, but then also I got called out that this might have been on the table. We kind of played around with how to show the information. This is what we landed on. Obviously, again, we're not tied to anything here, but I I think this is pretty good. We tried to, we just did struggle a little bit with how you show the associated fee with the principal fee. We did that through uh bolding all principal fees and just unbolding all associated fees. Because if those were their own items, that could get confusing. So I just wanted to quickly go over, and I do, I came a little bit more prepared this time on what we raised in terms of some of these fees. So we have, we raised our escrow maximum. Uh, it was raised from three thousand five hundred to ten thousand escrow maximum. And that's because, honestly, right now, um, and not to freak out Mr. Escruth here, but um, because you're kind of in a different category. I don't expect this with your development. I don't think we'll surpass the three thousand five hundred escrow. Um, but, you know, we've had some larger developments come in. Ace Hardware, the Surgical Center, um, you know, Norm Fastener for sure, where we've just, that three thousand five hundred disappeared within days. And so now we're having to bill out, so we thought, Norm Fasteners is obviously an outlier um in terms of what that's cost us to review. But with our, with the growing rates of inflation right now, our costs have too grown. Um, what we get charged for legal has grown, engineering review has grown, so we need to up it by quite a bit. It's ten thousand. We'll take those payments and installments of two thousand at a time, which is five hundred up uh from where we are right now. Um, the next one is text amendment uh requests from the public. Currently, it's at two fifty. We brought it up fifty bucks. I, this is just because, especially with the private drives, we far exceeded two hundred and fifty dollars in staff time on that alone. Now, some, some text requests are, you know, two words, but some are whole ordinances that they want to build out and, you know, that can be expensive. So we're just upping that a little bit to help cover that.
Would you, would you repeat what it was before? I'm sorry.
It was this, yeah.
Two fifty before.
It's two fifty, so we're going up by fifty dollars, three hundred.
Is that enough? I'm asking the question because of the time that you're putting in, that you talk about. And that's all in a hundred dollars an hour.
Well, I do, I know, I do think so, though, because that private drive one, again, somewhere in Norm Faster, that's a massive outlier. Um, typically, when somebody's requesting a text amendment, they're trying to change a line, a sentence. You know, there's one sentence that's negatively impacting them, there's one setback that's negatively impacting them, and they're looking to adjust, you know, that. So we shouldn't be at those staff times where it should be taking us six hours to put something together. It should be taking us two hours to put something together, bringing it to this body and knowing within a vote.
Yep.
What, where we stand.
Yeah.
So to I, three, to me, three hundred's enough if, over time, though, and that's the nice thing about this document is, I, I think in my time here, I brought this to the planning commission. This will be my third time.
Yes, it is.
So basically, once a year, so we're updating this more rapidly than most departments are updating their fees.
Now, where's text amendment in this whole list?
Second, first page. Um, okay, the next one is under special use fee. With that, again, um, had to do with the escrow, so it's just the same thing we talked about before, just reiterated.
Miles, before we move on, uh, under amendments, transfers, and extensions, uh, you have one fifty plus half the original fee. That plus half the original fee isn't formatted the way that others are formatted in parentheses, so that might be just for clarity's sake.
Yeah, no, we can make that formatting change. I'll note that here.
One other, uh, on this page, so the title of this is Bath Turb Township Fees, Fee Schedules. This is not all the fees that the township, so I would maybe Planning Departments, Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, planning, planning, zoning, and assessing, because we have, because we have our planning, zoning, and assessing, it's, we're almost like a sub area. We call ourselves PABs is our acronym.
PABs, that's exciting.
Yeah, so I'll just put, you know, the PABs fees or whatever.
Uh, one other is the the footnotes. I talked about additional fees. I wonder for the sake of I, uh, people who may be the audience for this document, if that could be built in somewhere or not as a footnote? Because that's pretty easy to.
Okay.
Uh, skip over, and that might just, you know.
Where is that at?
At the bottom of.
Probably ought to be bigger than four.
I didn't even read it.
To just prove your point.
No, it's fine. It's all good. All right, and then we.
Miles, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You were back at the escrow amount was ten, was that thirty-five also before it went to ten?
Yep, yep, it's all the same. So the escrow one repeats, because with each type of item, we require an escrow deposit. So rezoning gets an escrow, special use gets an escrow, site plan review gets an escrow. Now, these don't stack, so maybe that's something we need to put into the footnotes. If you go to do a site plan review and a special use permit, we don't take in two escrows. We take in one, because we're evaluating one development. So probably should add that in as well, because I could see that causing confusion. Um, so yeah, and then the, all the escrow amounts change, and I think that is it. So not too many changes. We will make the change to the plus half of the original fee, putting that in brackets, and we'll make the change to the footnotes. Is there any other feedback? I'm fine with bringing this back. There's no rush. I'm not gonna go edits. But there, there are small changes we can make on, but there's not like, we're not uh going into debt, because these fees are in place. If the, if the planning commission is comfortable.
Just another stylistic, I, sometimes you have the comma for thousands.
Sometimes.
Sometimes you don't.
Okay.
Yeah, a little more consistency, maybe.
Good call.
Oh, that looks great. It's easy to read.
Yep, cool. Yeah, I like this layout better, I think, than the previous one for sure. All right, I'm good if the planning commission is good. Thanks for being patient with us through this and just making a bunch of small changes.
So we ready to move on? Okay, let's move on to Main Street Townhomes.
Okay. Um, let me get this squared up so we can see what we're talking about.
I know I'm also gonna ask you what lot this is, so if you need to show that too.
I found the, the uh, the G I F was very helpful to that.
Yeah, I'll pull that up.
Do you know what it is? It's great, Finch G I S.
Thank you for that, by the way, Ray.
Oh, yeah, I forgot it.
I just wanted to pull up that, the architectural elevation, why I talk about this a little bit, just so everyone can see that. And let me go to Finch G I S and I'll kind of go through my normal. Show you guys where this is at. So what we're looking at here is two different parcels, uh, developer looking to develop any kind of village area. Um, the one larger parcel here, and then this parcel to the north of it. Um, and then this, if for everyone that's familiar with the Main Street area, is the DDA parcel that the township now has after the disultment of the DDA. And so this is zone high-density development. What the developer has brought forward is. And so this is zone high density development, what the developer has brought forward is one cop, one quadplex, which is a four unit development on each parcel. Um this is a use allowed by special right in the high density development district, so this is just here for a site plan review, not a special use permit, so kind of what that means and uh kind of planning, I guess, legal sense is um our latitude on the conditions we can put on this are restrained a little bit more from what they would be if it's a special use permit, so just kind of keep that in mind as uh this body's reviewing this. That's not to say that conditions can't uh be placed, they most certainly can, and it's encouraged to do so, they just need to be closely tied to uh some kind of dimensional standard, some kind of site difficulty.
See the imagery right over here, you can just hit that.
Um, I don't know, Chair, you want to have the developer come up and say a couple words about the development?
Well, I think at some point, yeah, that's very appropriate. Anybody got any initial questions about this?
All right.
Go ahead, George. So you can even go to yours, so you can see how it changed.
Go ahead.
They got three hands over there.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't take you in order.
Is the the street parking, uh Miles, is that an issue with in the village?
No, so we, the street parking is actually an interesting um aspect of this design, uh we uh did some probing with the road commission when this was first brought to the township. This was, just for full information, I guess, uh Mr. Eschruth who's here tonight, brought this development a while back, um and was kind of tossing the idea around. And then obviously, a lot has changed uh in terms of commercial lending and the atmosphere around that, causing Mr. Eschruth to, and let me know if I'm speaking incorrectly, but kind of put the process on pause for a while, but one thing that we talked about before it got put on put on pause was extending kind of what you would say is the fabric of this corridor here, and I think the whole in the planning sphere, the built environment is important and maintaining kind of that uh built environment and that corridor feel is something that I think has been challenging in Bath. And uh by aesthetically continuing the on-street parking that helps build that main street, uh I'm gonna use the word vibe uh for lack of a better term, um and it helps the developer maintain their green space and allows them to get the parking that their residents would need, so we threw it around.
Go back to that picture again before you.
This one?
The the green one.
The G I S one?
Uh we threw it around with the road commission and they didn't mind if the developer um.
The only question I've got, the existing angle parking there, to me, it looks like forty-five degree angle parking, not sixty degree.
Okay.
It makes a big difference.
It does.
Because it, this doesn't encro- encroach into the road as much as sixty degree parking does.
Okay.
And I I did some calculations on the sixty degree parking for the proposal here.
They had their proposal at sixty degrees.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the problem with that is, if you maintain the sidewalk and stuff the way the proposal is, it decreases the width of one lane, if you maintain the center line of the road by six feet. So instead of a twelve foot lane, you get a six foot lane, so that can't happen.
I, and I think that's right, right where your expertise comes in really handy here, and I I don't think Mr. Eschruth can speak to this when he does his, but I would imagine that that's something that they wouldn't mind taking a look at.
Yeah, there's a way, I figured, there's ways to take care, if you're gonna allow the on-street parking, my question was, does this kind of a development have to have off-street parking?
They don't have to, they're seeking to do so, and the road commission would permit it, they would be developing at their costs, and there would be some maintenance costs long term that the road commission may incur, the same that they incur now.
As we get into, I can tell you what my thoughts are on the angle parking and how we can fix that. The other problem with angle parking with the sidewalk, right now, the angle parking there is right beside the sidewalk, and you can see, like that first vehicle is parked halfway across the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We can't let that happen.
Yeah, I also think that's a problem again, and we've talked about this a lot of enforcement, if people aren't parking correctly, they should get a parking ticket.
Well, well, the other way, other way is leave a three foot green space between the back of the curb and the sidewalk.
Sure.
What that's gonna take is an easement to do that, but right now.
Do they have this space?
Well, they got thirty-five feet between the right away and the face of the building.
Okay.
If that was twenty-five instead of thirty-five, with a ten foot easement.
I think the way we see that is the sidewalk where it is right now, is gonna be right about where the sidewalk would have to uh stay in order to get angle parking in there, so what we would look at doing is probably using that sidewalk as a curb as well as a sidewalk.
That was, that that's my problem though, is because if you do that, the cars parking that angle are gonna overhang the sidewalk, so instead of having a four foot sidewalk, which I don't think we should allow anyway, um you're gonna get with a two foot sidewalk.
And if we had to do that, if we could maybe extend the width of the sidewalk a little, I mean, the idea of putting a uh landscape barrier in between the two, I don't think that would restrict anything uh from our standpoint, I mean, we can do that.
You can do that without the landscape.
It's very hard to maintain that.
Make it a side, seven foot sidewalk, you need to get two feet for the cars and five feet for the people.
Yeah.
There's ways of doing that without the green strip, but.
I think these are all options, I would say, just with the green strips in the past, and we happen to have one in front of the McDonald's on Saginaw that's very poorly made, they are hard to maintain over time. People end up playing rocks on them, the rocks end up going in the street, because grass, it's two feet of grass, it doesn't grow well.
One thing we don't have there uh are curbs, like you mentioned, the cement, you know.
But that's something that they will be able to look at as they implement.
No, 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 but I'm saying, for the ones that are there right now, um the township, I would feel if that's township parking, then that should, you know, that should fall on that.
Is this area included in the safe routes to school sidewalk?
It is.
So.
Yes.
That's gonna impact that too.
They won't be touching the sidewalk on that side, they'll leave.
Okay.
And some sidewalk on that opposite side of the road.
Yeah.
So if you, if you see, like Ray pointed out, that and the the vehicles that are parked there now, that's always been problematic, all down to there. For since, you know, since the horse buggy. Just looking at pictures. Some here might be able to tell me personally, but I'm just, from from pictures I've seen.
But I think myself and the developer are staying here tonight saying, we're hearing the concerns of the planning commission, look at how parking is going to work here, we get, so that's something that we can do.
Okay, does, is there enough space?
Go ahead, no, go ahead, finish your question.
Is there enough space to to have what it's laid out now and just push it to the west or?
Well, he's got, he's got thirty-five feet, at least the way I read the plan, thirty-five feet from the edge of the existing right away to the face of his buildings. So if we put it evenly, to be able to push this back a little bit to get, so we haven't encroached on the road so much, he still have twenty-five feet.
And they'll start.
Well, if we had to deed part of that to the city, we'd be able to, we'd be willing to put that into the easement area as well, if it required that.
And there's enough room to do it.
Are those parking spaces going to be designated as parking for those residents, or can anybody just drive up to Main Street and park in those spots?
I think it would probably be hard for us to designate them.
My my suggestion is, you know, I've lived in pretty urban areas where I've had to find parking every night when I come home from work, and I think it's actually probably just easiest and probably in conformity with what we're trying to do, or at least what I think we're trying to do for Main Street, just leave it public parking. And that's how it operates now, and it operates okay, it seems like, I we, I never hear like, oh my God, I can't find a parking spot in Bath.
If you want a good example of power, you know, kind of, you know, more developed downtown area than what this is, go to Duett. They've got angle parking there. And it is a pain.
Yes, it is.
Because there's a lot of, lot of traffic on that north south street, when you're trying to back out of that space, it's almost impossible. So I think we need to, you take a look at that, you know, long term, what do we want this to look like in fifteen years?
What would be the options, Ray, what would, what would be some of the examples that might correct that?
Parallel parking, but you don't get, you lose, you lose a lot of parking if you do that.
Yeah.
But.
That that's already kind of light on parking anyways right now, I mean, you 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 think that, you know, there's not that many people that park on Main Street, but you've been down on Main Street where you can't, you can't find to go somewhere, and if they have a track need or anything, they're gonna cut through our little town like, like nothing and take all them parking spots in a heartbeat.
I guess I look at this area down here, this whole area needs development of some sort. When that happens, you're gonna need a lot more parking than you've got now.
Absolutely.
So we've got to plan that in, and how we're gonna do that, it's gonna have to be off-street parking, and where do we start requiring off-street parking? Do we start here with this one?
I.
Maybe we could use the uh that former DDA uh locale for a parking, a municipal parking lot.
That's what I was gonna say too, um I think that I, I think we have to look at a couple things here, obviously, you know, we have a developer in front of us tonight, they're looking to take on a project in an area that, you know, hasn't taken on a project in a while, so I think they should get this is, now I'm in the realm of opinion here a little bit, so take everything about to say it's a grain of salt, but I think they should get some credit for, you know, taking on a project, and I think they should get a partner that's willing to work in good faith and analyze this project on the merits of it. And then I think, Ray, you're correct, obviously, our whole mission is mandate is to do long-term planning. But I don't foresee the issue that you're speaking about arising even maybe in the next ten years, but I think if it does arise, I think we do have enough autonomy in the area where we could address it easily.
I'm excited to see uh this development in that location.
Yeah.
Much so.
I, it looks like it's gonna be an attractive facility, um I think that it's gonna be, go a long way to help revitalize the downtown area.
Uh certainly, the one, just general comment, going back to the storage buildings back there. And I can see why they storage, it's not just ruined, the buildings itself, but you know, looking, looking long term, that area, especially in the larger lot, could be developed into a parking area. But the other thing is, it shows here a proposed ten foot wide drive, which is fine, but it says uh crushed concrete or something. I think that should be a paved road, I know there are other drives in this area that are that are just crushed asphalt, but I think we're looking long term again. We need to get away from gravel driveways.
Well, if I may, um bituminous or limestone is permeable, and it doesn't clog like permeable uh
pavement?
Pavement, um that's one of the reasons they poo-pooed it over at MSU's, because it clogs up after about ten years. I I think we should go more towards permeable surfaces as opposed to pavement. Because it looks like heck when that pavement is, you know, a lot of times it's only two inches thick, they put it in there, and five years you're gonna get a hole in it, and then they're just gonna throw some cold cold patch in there, and conversely, you can, you know, actually grade it gravel and then re um roll it so that it gets uh significantly uh hardened, almost like pavement.
I'll say something too about the off-street parking that now thinking about it has actually been a benefit that we have some of these rental units on Main Street. And their parking is pretty much by design on-street, is, you know, we have some of these rental facilities in the township, including, when I looked at Somerset where these renters bring in these junk vehicles, and like at Somerset, if you go to Somerset's back lot, there's like a couple like project cars sitting in the back forty that some renter has just like plopped there and the apartments are fighting, by keeping the parking out kind of in the public sphere, it's allowed us, um somebody had a car at this facility here that was like, the front half was missing, but because it wasn't like in the backyard tucked away, we were getting complaints about it, we were able to follow up, so that is one benefit of having the vehicles kind of out front and center, is it allows us more ability to enforce.
That that brings up another question, what what are our requirements for vehicles parked on private property? I think, because I drove down the street the other day, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's the hand drive.
So they have.
Somebody, somebody has basically stripped a drive vehicle, it's down to its frame, sitting on a block.
They have to have license, so I have a license plate on it and operation.
That's definitely not operational, doesn't have, has nothing.
Now, if somebody's work, there's a little bit of leeway there if you're working on your car and it's actively, but you know, if it's a junk car that's been there for ten, thirty days, then yeah, you should call, put in a ring complaint. Okay.
Well, that's another subject.
Go, yeah, go in back.
Unless you're a trustee and you complain, then there's no action.
You know what happens?
On sidewalks. Okay.
Okay, George has his hand up.
Go ahead, George.
Um Miles might comment on it, he was kind of going back to something.
Okay.
What were you gonna say, Miles?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm done.
I was, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
The the museum thing, so that is, that site has been vacant for a while, and before that site was there, that's where the elevator, that's where the hub of Bath used to be.
These two sites?
Yes.
Okay.
So the the building where the lot where the car was, used to be like my uncle Hank's garage, right there, that used to be a garage, and that used to that used to um actually be like a competitor of the other garages up on the street right now. So, you know, they were the two local guys in the community.
Okay.
And then in the middle there, there was a um grain elevator, and railroad tracks come through there, so that's where the hub of the community was, all the farmers were there, and right up the street where the music place is, was the meat market, and I just am enjoying talking about this, so if you guys bear with me. Um so there there may be some artifacts or some things that come up, and and I would ask to ask your excavators, people to keep their eyes open for any thing, there was a big barn there, that when I grew up, we played in it, and there was all kinds of stuff in there. So uh that would be very interesting to see any museum parts or artifacts or little things, you know, whatever from from that. And then I was also wondering about the toxicity, if that was an issue, you know. I I love the develop, I think it's gonna be, it's beautiful, it looks beautiful.
I I have comments on the toxicity question, but I don't know if the developer wants their John.
Do you wanna talk about the the toxicity issue, or have you addressed it already? Because you realize that's part of the old railroad right away.
Right, and that's, that's where we'd be starting, the the first building we'd be doing would be on that south parcel, a lot of it, which would be the railroad right away. Then we'd be doing the second building, uh actually, where there's a couple of tall trees that we want to cut down. And if anyone in the township that knows there's a problem with tall trees, I have a uh property over on Culver Drive that uh five years ago, a tree dropped right on my property and crushed it.
Is that the one right on, right on?
I'm probably not gonna wanna build in front of those two trees, so they're probably gonna come down. So that'd be something we'd be thinking about there.
It's less than half an acre.
Your popper trees, they're, I mean, I think you should probably in your tree ordinance discriminate against what type of trees you leave.
Miles, I have a question.
Yeah.
That lot directly southwest of that, right there.
This one?
It's, yeah, it says no man's.
Yep.
There's no information on it whatsoever, what is it?
Me and Mr. Eschruth have actually spoken about this parcel, I'm hoping that um our township assessor can work with him to uh put him through, it's called, you have to petition the circuit court to take ownership of this property, if you're an adjacent property owner, you're legally allowed to go through that process. And we've cleaned up several of these in the past, um through that mechanism, they're actually all over the township, now they're typically stretches of like four feet by eight feet, now this is a bigger one, so uh I think Mr. Eschruth's got a real opportunity here, and there's a benefit for him to take it on, and we would love to see it done, because it cleans up our parcel layers.
Yep.
Um so we're mutually beneficial here, the only problem is, it's not very common, so I think when he originally reached out to the courts, they were like, what are you talking about? We've never even heard of this. Um but we, so we'll work with Bath and get him all of the right information, so that process can be handled.
Is this just left over because it used to belong to the railroad and then nobody took it after that?
No one has ever had like deed ownership of it, no one has ever owned it, as far as any rec, not even the railroad, as far as any records are.
Not even the railroad?
The railroad.
Why were those two properties earned on Vine Street, I mean, those aren't very big properties.
So we're not getting.
Nope, so actually, you'll see this one right here, see this square, this was a lot, this was a no man's land right here, and they went through the process and grass. And then this one is owned by the Fries who own this property here.
See, look at this, it says nothing.
So the Fries even tried to build a fence across this at one time, and we had to deny their permit because they didn't own the property, they said they did, we said prove it, they couldn't.
Going back to um contaminants, I, so this came up during uh DDA deliberations, uh they did an environmental audit.
Uh, they did an environmental audit of that property.
This one, yep.
And the results of that audit came back with a recommendation to do whatever the second level.
A phase two.
A phase two audits.
So what, so yep, I'm, I'm aware of that. So yeah, they did a phase one environmental assessment. And as what happens with a lot of phase one environmental assessments, usually either you get a green light where they say like more information is needed. Um, a phase two is where they start doing more in-depth probing and historical documentation. And I think it said in there that, you know, this is all likely is all the industrial, uh, legacy of this area, um, which is common in the Midwest, but in Michigan. Um, so that's something that Mr. S Truth will have to work through as he goes through this process. From the township side, obviously, we're gonna send this to Eagle for, um, our agency review. We're gonna send it to the Mid-Michigan Health Department. Those would be kinda the two agencies where they have jurisdiction and authority to follow up on that. And so we'll have to see what their recommendations are.
Is, another page, is this area served by municipal sewer and water?
There is.
Sewer but no water?
No.
It's the other way around, isn't it?
It's the other way around. No, 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 it's that's correct, there's sewer but no water, yeah.
Right.
There's sewer but no water. Um, that's why the health department's gonna have to be involved because they'll be doing wells anyways. Um, as everyone in the village area, including myself now, is on a well, so I don't know, you know, what that says. But again, uh, we'll send this for all the proper agency reviews. They will let us know what they think. We'll share obviously the information we have with them. And then I think Mr. S Truth has tried to, I don't wanna speak for you again, but this is what I was trying to get to come out to like. They know that there is a like, uh, industrial legacy on this site and they have made a design choice when, uh, developing this type of structure to not go with a basement or even a crawl space in order to minimize the actual amount of soil that's been having to be tilled up or even excavated here. They're just gonna go with slabs and cap it. So that's kinda like the most environmentally friendly and the most, uh, uh, kind of risk minimal option for this type of property is just a slab and cap.
I wondered why that was just a slab. And it didn't seem to be, the slab didn't seem to be insulated though, either.
These aren't full construction plans.
Yeah, they'd do a, it'd be a sealed insulated slab.
Oh, it would, okay.
Yeah, they're not full construction plans. I didn't expect to see that level of detail, but a lot of these new builds have very high R values.
When you, when you talk about sewers, I don't know what, the school will, will look at this thing.
Yep.
My experience has always been that every building has to have its own sewer lead. These two are connected together in one lead. And whether the school will allow that or not, I don't know.
I don't know. I, I, that is something Mr. S Truth, they probably will take a look at that.
We, we worked with school before on that. We have one over on, uh, outer drive in Bath that we ran a private lead from one site to the other and connected two of them together. And basically it was done there for the same reason. We don't have to do that here. We're doing that just so that we didn't do two street cuts.
Yeah.
Uh, if we, there are two locations, uh, the south lot has its own sewer location lead there. Uh, I think that's, I don't know if it's shown on our site plan because we pulled them together, but there's a lead in two different locations there.
There is.
Uh, that we could tie into. But our intention is to try to get a permit to, to do one lead. So we'd run a, essentially a full sewer line from the first to the second and then connect just the lead into that and run that to the street, whatever school will let us do.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're onto default to them too. Okay, so I, I think the purpose of tonight is, you know, for them to get feedback from this body so they can kinda move forward with the next phase of plan development. Um, I, I know we've got a couple of items that we've spoken about in the past from kinda the staff side. Uh, in terms of minimum zoning, um, where structures are placed adjacent to other structures, we didn't see anything too problematic. Um, this, they're skinnier drive widths, but I think Kevin, I, he'll do a review with the fire department, Kevin Douglas, uh, the fire marshal. I, I think he'll likely say he can get a hundred and fifty feet of hose around all of these structures. So he wouldn't, when they're doing emergency calls to this, they likely wouldn't be utilizing those drives. They'd be utilizing the street and then doing, conducting the operations from the street right away.
With that one drive right just between the two.
Yeah.
One question for the, the storage buildings.
Okay.
Are those gonna be constructed with like a garage door?
Yeah, the storage buildings are gonna be built very similar to those at Somerset, which are one car, uh, they're essentially one car garages. These will be fourteen by twenty foot, so.
So conceivably.
Car, car could actually park in them.
Okay. Those are included in the each unit?
That would, that would be, uh, that would be, we're building the first four units and we won't have a garage until afterwards. I mean, that's the third phase, so whether that third phase comes about or not, uh, kinda depends on the rental situation there.
So these are rental units?
But they're all rental units.
They're rental units.
Not for sale units, it'll be rental units.
But each of those storage buildings would be assigned to a, a house.
It'd be a storage building for each one of them, uh, and a possible, uh, garage location for each of them, yes.
Which would mitigate parking.
Yeah. I don't know.
Well, if you have more than one driver living there, then you need more than one parking space.
Yeah. This is, this is always a weird question to ask, I think, on the front end, but I think it's an interesting one. Helps the planning commission get in the mindset of like what you're trying to do here. Do you know what your kinda target price point or what, what's your target, what's your vision for who's gonna live here?
Well, the situation on any rental properties now is the prices going up on the, on the rents. I mean, uh, we were targeting a market rent of about a thousand dollars and we're probably looking at closer to twelve to fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is probably where we're gonna be at.
I think that's probably in line with most median rents these days.
And that'll, that'll determine what, what type of people move in there or who moves in there. I mean, I actually like to be able to do units that, that we could get a few, you know, a couple lower price rentals out of them, but it's not gonna happen.
But you're, so you're essentially looking for market rate rentals here, so.
Oh, yeah, this is market rate. We're not doing any kind of subsidy, anything of that sort.
Okay.
Unless, I mean, there are agencies in the township that are in the county that still will do some subsidy on market rate rental, but we're building them at market rate.
Okay.
Now, phase three, since that's gonna be the last thing to do if it happens, depending on who rents the front, they might have some input to say, well, if you made these storage units instead of twenty feet deep, make them twenty-four feet deep, that gives me some more storage in there. That would be an option. Cause right now twenty feet long, that's good enough for a car and walk around, but that's about, that's about it.
You wouldn't get around it.
Twenty foot garage is much bigger than most rentals have.
Yeah, that's probably true.
And most rentals aren't gonna have a garage grid.
No, that's true. I'm just saying, if you're gonna build one, you have, you have to charge, you have to charge it a little bit more, I understand.
To see this because, like if you wanna search and I wanna see how many units does he have around here? So you just go to owner and put first housing service. And look at that, it tells you everyone that's in Bath, don't you? That's why I got.
Arrange them with garages a little bit, uh, to get any of them on in that location.
Is the thought to have street trees along the street?
Yes.
In terms of landscaping, what are you thinking? Are you thinking you guys will put some street trees along the street? Some, some trees in the front yard?
In the front yard is where we build up and put the trees, yes.
The space behind, if you were to get that north, no man's land, what, what's going to, what's your intent with that? Much space not being utilized.
Be no man's land that we pay taxes on.
But you're just gonna keep it green, open space, kind of a backyard, okay?
For the dogs.
Yeah, I don't, I actually don't think that's a bad idea for, because renters have animals these days and that'll give them a little bit of space.
Yeah, we looked at putting a walking trail through that, kind of as a, just a path through that area. It's, it's quite frankly, it's a, uh, a lower area.
Yeah. This is what you could see on every piece.
It, it would, it would allow for some of the drainage, the surface drainage is gonna go to that area for sure.
Mm-hmm.
And, but it, it would be a nice area to put a walking path through, like pick a dog out into or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the sweet little picnic area.
I just wanted some clarification on the sidewalks. I know you mentioned it earlier, but, uh, is that the developer's responsibility to put sidewalks in to that property up to the current standard?
Well, this is gonna kinda be a weird one for the sidewalks because they're gonna be coming in at a time period where we're gonna be doing a lot of sidewalk work on that area. And we'll probably, if this is able to move forward, which, you know, I think has every intention to do so, we'll probably try to form some kind of agreement with the developer on, it'll be probably, you know, some kind of sixty, forty, fifty, fifty agreement where we're gonna do some of the work and we're gonna have them do some of the work. Cause we have an intention, if this, even if this goes away, this goes nowhere in that scenario, we are using township funds to pick up areas that weren't covered by St. Francis School. And this is one of those target areas.
So one way or another, there will be sidewalk.
Yep.
And a continuation.
Standards.
But we were just gonna lay four foot wide, which is bare minimum ADA compliant sidewalk, um, at grade. We weren't gonna do curb cuts or anything like that. We're gonna, if they're gonna do some kind of on-street parking, that we, and they were willing to give us an easement, we would probably bump those sidewalk backs, still install them at price to us. They would pick up the cost of the curb cut itself and then the cost of the parking. So we would kinda handle our piece of it, they would handle their piece of it, and we'd probably wanna secure an easement at some point.
Well, that gives us a little, um, like Ray was speaking earlier about a little extra.
Yeah, might give us a little extra room if they're willing to give us an easement.
Little deeper.
Yeah, and let us push back on in there.
I'd imagine, being that's the front of the building and sun coming up on that side, it's probably gonna be a, a nice place for people to come out in the morning and sit and, you know, want it not be crowded with vehicle heavy there.
Yeah, I think there's, that's something that we can talk about. And that's something where, um, we're getting into kinda how the sidewalk stuff's gonna work. But, uh, DPW Director Ben is gonna be our project manager. So if there is some kind of last minute change, kinda the beauty of using a hundred percent local funds on some of these sidewalk portions is we didn't couple them with the state project. So we have complete autonomy on what we wanna do. We have no restrictions on where we wanna put anything.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the porch in the front is, what, four feet wide? How wide is that, you know?
I don't know if I have a meter of knowledge here.
I couldn't find it. All I was getting at is that even if, if he was willing to give it an easement, to push the sidewalks back a little bit, there would still be, it looks like at least twenty feet of grass between the edge of the porch and the sidewalk.
Yeah, it seemed, oh, yeah, I was trying to get a scale so I could just get reference.
But I don't see any.
I could, I, if I had a roar and they'll print it out, I could give this in a scale. But, um, yeah, those look to be about half of that, so yeah, like four or five feet porches. I, I agree that from, it looks like their property line right now, it's probably something like.
It's thirty-five feet to the front of the building.
Yeah. So there, there's plenty of space there. So even if they gave us an additional like five foot e-permit sidewalk easement, they'd still have over twenty feet.
Now, one, one thing you mentioned, Miles, oh, trying to upgrade sidewalks as part of this whole program and put in just a minimum four foot, that isn't our standard, five feet? I think we build new sidewalks anyways, it should be five feet.
That's ADA.
Can't be, can't be four feet.
What was that, Jason?
It is five feet, yeah.
Yep, so in sections like this, you guys are correct. In sections like this where we're completely replacing a whole like, we had to make an executive decision here a little bit. Anywhere where we're doing, uh, large sections of sidewalk, we're bringing those up to the current ADA standard, which is five feet. But, and what the weird part is, there's some sections in downtown, we're kinda outside the topic, but just so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, where you're missing five feet.
Where we're missing five feet of sidewalk that's crumbled, we're not gonna have like twenty feet of four foot and then like five feet of five foot and then back to four foot. And so we're extending those at a higher rate.
That makes sense.
My question to you is the property to the south of there, if you go back to that city map. Uh, that spot and then those businesses, they've got sidewalks. Are we gonna continue? And where that DDA property is, we're going to put sidewalk in front of it just to the north of that.
So all of this.
Making sure his property has its continuous sidewalk, not stopping.
There is continuous sidewalk.
There is continuous sidewalk. So these all, this is all sidewalk here and actually a lot of this wasn't in too bad a shape. I think there might be a little bit of grinding that's required where they've just become unlevel.
Yeah, they've shifted.
And we'll do that work, but really right about here is where this is all gonna be replaced. And that's why, because it's such a long segment, we can do that whole segment at five.
Nice. So regarding the parking, um, I don't know what the things are called, but they're little concrete six-inch curbs.
No, not your, not curbs. I know what you're saying. They stop the vehicle.
Well, they're bumpers.
I don't know what they're called either.
So whatever those are called, I mean, could it, for the sake of simplicity, I, we have several tools in our toolbox already. One is enforcing, uh, parking regulations.
Yeah.
Uh, if the problem persists and assuming those parking spaces are owned by the municipality, couldn't we install those little thing with things to keep people from parking way over the?
And those are things like we've ran into a number of issues as things have grown and we're doing with a lot of them in Park Lake where we're looking to do some crosswalks, do some ball yards to slow people down. So there's all kinds of safety through environmental design stuff we're looking at.
Uh, on the new stuff, that's fine, but like on the existing, like the car you have just out of the image. They, if they, if they back up off that sidewalk, now they're out in the road.
They're in the road, yeah.
There's, there's not space.
The, the other problem with those little bumpers, I know what you're talking about, when it comes to winter snow plowing.
Yep.
Those things are a pain in the butt.
Yeah.
Yeah, they sure are.
Yeah, they're at an angle, you, you, you can't just go down.
Well, and that's why we just, I think they're all good ideas, but that's why we rely on the rail commission and their ideas. And that's why like the ball yards that we're doing on Park Lake to slow traffic are removable. So they come out in the winter, so I have that problem.
What, excuse me, what are you talking about? Do they come out in the winter?
Uh, they're, I, I'm calling them ball yards.
Oh, the ducks, you're talking about ducks.
Yeah, they, if a car hits them, they just flap down. But they're, they're, what they do is they narrow the road in the eyes of the driver, so it makes them slow down.
They don't actually, but yeah.
They don't actually, but it's all perception. Well, that's the beauty of perception.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanna, sorry, we got off track a couple of times.
We did.
Is, I guess, is there anything else at this body, ones from the developer?
Do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, just, uh, just I like to say, you know, we like working in bad township. And it's a place where I've got family history here, so.
Guess you do.
I'm interested in doing something to the downtown area. And, uh, any kind of improvement, uh, that we can do would be, you know, something that we wanna try to get, get in place here in the township.
Thank you for proactively starting the conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm excited about this.
Yeah, it's good, it's good to have a, a proposed development at least.
Yeah.
I think that we continually talk about the need for housing and lower end of the market affordable housing in bad township. And I think that this is a good start.
So just so everyone knows for next steps, so I will, uh, Mr. S Truth kinda conclude everything that was said tonight in an email to you, just so we're all on the same page and working with the same information. And then Mr. S Truth, you will get a, us a more built-out set of plans. We'll kick out an agency review, um, depending on when you get the plans, um, to us. I don't know exactly when we'll be back, but that agency review typically takes about two, three weeks. I compile all that into a staff report and then we would bring that back to the planning commission. They'll have full information at that time, they'd be able to take a vote on this. And then for the planning commission, when, once you take a vote on this one because of its by right nature, that would be it. So it doesn't need to go to the board, it doesn't need a public hearing or anything like that.
Can I?
Do you need the county permits before I come back the next time?
No, so after you get the vote from this body, then we would move to the building phase and then at that point. No, so after you get the vote from this body, then we would move to the building phase, and then at that point, they, before they issue a building permit, they will need all the county permits. So sewer, water, or in this case, uh, well.
Right, correct. Just, I just, barring any, any unforeseen circumstances, ideally, did you have a point in time you were planning on breaking ground?
Well, we'd like to start, we'd like to, we'd like to start in last May, but we decided not to, so, uh, we'd like to get things going till we could start, you know, early summer.
Sure, nice, nice, thank you.
I guess, my answer is, have your engineer take a look at that angle parking and see how we can make that sixty-degree parking work without encroaching on the street? It might take an easement if that's something you could do.
If we're willing to look at either, doing it either way, I'm not sure what, uh, I mean, typically, it's the sixty-degree angle. It's typically where the engineering is gonna do it.
Yep.
So you're taking the forty-five.
Sixty degrees, sixty, you can do the sixty-degree angle parking if you're willing to give us an easement to push that sidewalk back.
Sidewalk, right, yeah. And that would be, that's, that's kind of how we were looking at doing it, is tightening the sidewalk over a little bit, because it will take a little bit of front yard space out, but.
Yeah.
Really, we're trying to make it look like.
Yeah.
The units are closer to the street anyway, trying to make it.
And I think, and I think if you.
Village.
Nice. If the parking's getting ready for the sidewalk on the side, it's gonna start at the curb. But then, if you make the sidewalk seven feet wide, then you don't have the problem about the cars overhanging the sidewalk and making the sidewalk three feet wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, less lawn to mow, too, so it cuts down on your maintenance costs.
One thing we both have to do is, so you, you talk, we were talking about curbs that will have to leave a accessible spot there.
Oh, yeah.
At, at some locations.
Yeah.
So there won't be a curb in part of that.
Yeah.
Everybody ready to move on?
I have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will let you go do your business.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Miles, you wanna move on to the marijuana issue?
Yeah. All right, we zoom back in here. All right, so it's kind of a weird one, but, um, I'll try to be brief. Uh, so obviously, this body and the Board of Trustees, I think most people, Kate, you might have fortunately missed a lot of these conversations. But the marijuana conversation was a very, um, intense one that went on for a number of years. And ordinances were created and amended and thrown away and recreated over a period of time. Um, we kind of settled on one that we, they worked out pretty well. I was just personally, I like to always throw this out there, that we didn't get sued, which was very nice, because all my other grad friends in planning that work for local municipalities all did get sued, so I like to rub that in there. And we only got one, which was a challenge, so that was, that was the challenge, is limiting the industry, but not having them sue you. And we did that through a series of kind of, uh, checks and balances in the process. Uh, one thing that we didn't anticipate to happen was when we had a developer that gained a medical marijuana license, and that helped them a lot with their scoring through the competitive process for the rec license. So I guess we always went in with the naive assumption that they would always maintain all their licenses as time went, because that's how the marijuana market was from two thousand sixteen to about twenty twenty-one. Now, as more recreational licensing started to come online, those medical licenses weren't seen as valuable. So now what you've seen is developers start to drop and say, I've got a rec, I, this medical thing comes with all this red tape, I don't really want, we don't even do medical anymore. These permits are five grand a piece, I don't wanna pay that every year when I re-up, so I'm just gonna do rec only. And then what we've seen is other competitors who didn't get a rec license will scoop up that medical license, open up shop as a medical provider in the community, and then sue the community for not allowing them to do a recreational license. And they use basically like a legal backdoor and to force in the municipality into issuing more licenses than they intended to issue. And we have seen some of those rulings go through in the UP in favor of the developer. So this last year, our one marijuana business in the township entertained the idea of dropping the medical license, because they were like, I don't know, I don't, we don't do medical, it sucks, I don't wanna pay five thousand dollars for this. Um, they were, they ended up still gaining it to give, and I think in a good faith effort, probably to give us some time to figure out how to analyze this. I think the best way to mitigate this issue, and I think that, by the way, it shouldn't matter, but I think that the, our one employer is just happy to be doing business here and is happy with our legal framework that we've created, so they, I don't think they would mind this change, but don't let that affect anything. Um, we can mitigate all this issue by just requiring anybody that has a recreational sales license to have a whole, or a medical provisioning license. Then the whole issue's null and void, because if you wanna do this, you have to do that. There's only one license for each available in the municipality, which means there'd only be one establishment operating. And so that language was in the intent of the former ordinance, but it wasn't explicit, so we've made that explicit through just one line item change here, which is, uh, this P. Uh, no person shall operate an adult marijuana establishment at any time or any location within this township without holding at least one current permit for a commercial medical marijuana facility under this ordinance. So they have to hold that one medical marijuana facility license if they wanna operate a commercial facility, or a commercial establishment. Kind of weird legal marijuana language as the laws have come down from the state. When you say marijuana facility, that facility word is a reference to a medical marijuana facility. We say establishment, that's a reference to a commercial establishment.
So are you seeking action on this tonight?
Yeah, I mean, the lawyers wrote this up, it's one small change, I don't think there's any, our legal counsel's like, this is the way to go. I, I don't know what else we can provide.
I move to approve the amendment to Chapter sixty-eight, Ordinance Number underscore, no, Number. Second? Whatever. Is that sufficient for a motion?
Yes, yeah.
Is there a second?
I, I second it.
Thank you, Ray. Uh, should we do a voice vote, or should we do a roll call, or?
Roll call vote.
We gotta send this to the board, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we probably better do a roll call.
Okay. I can get my sheet here.
You gonna do it, Miles, or you want Lex to do it? Let us know when you're ready.
Yep, so Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Crainer?
Yes.
Chair Reich?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kaki?
Yes.
Commissioner Severi?
Yes.
Commissioner Almarigi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just move to the end of this quarter? All right, thank you, and I think we didn't put a number on that one, because this is our first amendment in this, so this, we, amendment number one, we'll number that before we get to the board. Sometimes we don't like to assign a number and then, before we get to the board, and then we're like out of sequence.
Well, you're just gonna do this as a revision of the original ordinance, right?
Yep, yep, it would just be revision one of the regulatory ordinance.
Do you have anything you wanted to report, Miles?
Uh, no report for me, it's been a really busy week, um, we've got a lot of development stuff going on, it's getting warmer, we've had a lot, our permit uptick has been through the roof. So we've just been, um, really grinding away here.
People are building fences now, so.
Man, we don't see any public here. Kate, you got something for us?
Um, I don't have a lot to share from our recent Board of Trustees meeting, it was actually a fairly short meeting.
Yes, it was.
Um, I gave a brief update on the internet, which I believe I, I filled all of you in on previously, and, and it's really just the same story. Moving forward, we're at the initial phase of that challenge process. Um, I did wanna remind everybody about the town hall meeting coming up on April first, and I did reach out to Supervisor Fiedman's Bliss for clarification about what the role of the planning commission would be at that meeting, because there were some questions about that last time. And, and it was, um, what I had thought, which is just to be present and to, um, explain, if called upon to do so, that this was a long process, that it was ongoing and, and reviewed at many levels and over a long period of time and many, many meetings, that this wasn't some, a one-meeting, um, situation. Uh, that it was, that there was a thoughtful and thorough review process put in place for this project that I believe you all participated in. Um, I did go to the Clinton County Board of Commissioners meeting this morning on behalf of the Basque Museum Committee to share that project with them. Uh, but they did spend quite a bit of time amending their solar and wind ordinances this morning, which I thought was an interesting process, um, that they, they were amending the ordinance item by item and voting on each amendment as they went, which I had not seen that done before. So I thought that that was an interesting process. Obviously, there was a lot of interest from the public, the public comments portion was quite extensive, um, but I, on both sides.
I was just gonna say, was it all negative?
No, I thought it honestly was about fairly fifty-fifty, probably not exactly fifty-fifty, but there were certainly, um, proponents on both sides of the issue. So much so, that not having read the ordinance myself ahead of time, I wasn't even clear exactly what these people were specifically talking about. It was, it was kind of hard for me to discern.
I just wanted to ask, do you know if it was a, or did they try to emulate the state's ordinance, or did they try to create their own? I'm just curious, because we're exploring those options as well.
I believe that this would be an ordinance to regulate, what's the, this, they said fifty megawatts today, what is it at the state cutoff?
Two hundred megawatts.
Yeah, I believe that this would be that in-between size of probably like the fifty to two hundred. Um, I believe that they were crafting some language to address that. And they did mention multiple times that they were afraid some of the amendments they were making might be too extreme, that the state would come in and overrule them anyway.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that they were making the amendments to try and satisfy enough people that they would get approved. But I, I found it to be a really interesting process. Uh, after a couple hours, we were starving, so we had to leave. We did not stay till the very, very end, but we got the bulk of it.
Sorry, I didn't make it.
And then I think that's all that I wanted to share. Um, yeah, I guess, other than I'm just curious to see how, how it moves forward from there. I know they had a couple projects that hinged on, um, the updates of this ordinance going into the county.
Interesting. Anything else? Anybody got any questions for Kate?
Um, I have just one or two.
Go ahead.
And you personally, being the newest on the block, no, not the newest, are you?
No, I think I am, on both blocks.
There was a little controversy between Ryan and I as to whether these meetings, any of them, all of them, some of them, were quote, "town hall" meetings, which, correct me if I'm wrong, usually allows public participation.
Correct.
Or were they special trustee meetings where we would only, we, being the public, only be allowed to speak at the first three minutes and the first, and the, in the last three minutes?
You're talking about the special, the meetings proposed, the three additional meetings. I believe this one on April first is designated as a town hall format. Um, I think Ryan was putting the agenda together this evening, so you'll have more, we'll be able to get more information about that specifically.
Yeah.
Hopefully later this week. Um, the other two, for the Park Lake Trail and the Senior Center, Senior Services Advisory. Um, I believe are more of the special meeting format, which would follow our typical Board of Trustees format with the public comment. But I believe for the norm fasteners, it's intended to have more of a town hall, where I believe, um, the other people that have been invited, like the Dimaxian developers and LEAP and the norm people specifically, and SCUMA, I think also has been invited, will probably do more of a presentation themselves, or will be more of the ones answering the questions rather than the Board of Trustees. So hopefully that answers your question, I think it's, yes, some of the.
As our trustee representative, I just also, um, of course, you all know I have interest in the Park Lake Trail, and I just wanted to know if.
Really?
Have you had any edification on that at the board level?
I, I think that is the third of three of our special meetings, so that's probably at the.
Correct, May sixth.
Bottom of the list in terms of organization.
If half of you have never been on the trail, and I would be bold as to say more than half, you probably don't know exactly the geographic layout of it, how in the hell are you gonna have an informational meeting where the public can't have any input and determine whether or not the trail goes forward or not?
Well, I don't know that.
It's just a, it's just a paradox.
I don't know that the public can't have any input, but I do believe that it's not gonna be an open format input.
That's what Ryan says, yes.
Um, and I know that we are trying to schedule a group outing to go check out the trail before May.
I.
The weather thus far has not been predictable enough to head out on the trail yet. But hopefully, between now and May, that will change.
Okay, I, I will know, oh, and excuse me, um, I'll just talk to her at the end. You all don't need to know this, and you, you know, I don't care what you say or what you say behind me, I'll never stop on this trail. So it's my passion as well.
Really?
Since nineteen sixty-seven, I've been on using that trail, and I want others to use it, so.
Well, the big problem I have with that trail, Ray, is that it doesn't have conductivity the way it keeps being presented, because it's being presented as that piece of trail from the water structure across the berm and over to Park Lake Road. And I think the intention of the trail was that it be a continuous path around the lake and across Humlick Sod Farm to connect to the trail that's part of the trail system of Inyan County, East Lansing, and it's, and all.
And of course, I guess that confuses me even more, because you can't run until you walk. So there's gonna have to be one very basic starting project, and why not it have, why not it be one that's already there? That all it needs is some improvement. And then, uh, in fact, the tri-county, uh, university area non-motorized plan includes that around the lake and the one across the sod farm. I don't know how, how much would, would, would figure into that, or the, the drain commissioner, but I don't think either one of them would be very happy.
But I, I think from a use perspective, and I'm, I'm talking about myself here, and the rest of you can criticize me all you want, I think it's a lot more important to have a safe trail from Wishwasher Park up to the, uh, what we kind of refer to as the Four Corners of Clark and Webster.
Clark and Webster, okay, well, that takes in about four other projects, which is Safe Routes to School, the Webster Road Corridor.
Right.
Um, but yes, it has always been a trail around the lake.
Right, but I think you could get a lot more traction for that being a priority as opposed to the trail across the water structure and across the berm.
Let me ask you a question, as long as we're, um, constructively arguing on this.
Yeah.
Um, if you have, if you're a, an entity, a municipality that is going to file for a DNR trust fund grant or a TAP grant, and it requires, um, matching funds.
Right.
If you have matching funds in excess of three hundred thousand dollars for that legacy trail that you can only use for that, why wouldn't you go for that first, when all it involves is some paperwork to get it done? And then start on the next phase, which would be, uh, well, actually, it would be going through the marsh there to Park Lake Road, but then it would be connecting that, uh, trailhead around the lake.
Yeah.
Which, as I under, in fact, I've been doing some research on that, this planning commission, in two thousand and ten, um, Joe Benzey was the chair.
Yep, he was.
Yep, he was.
And he had extensive talks and they had extensive comment, commenting on buying up, actively buying up the parcels for the Park Lake Trail and then also the, around the lake. So, anyway.
Anyway, that's my comment.
That was my.
My digression. Okay. Planning Commission member comments. I don't normally like to start first, but I will say I am probably going to be gone most of the month of May. I know I'll be gone for the first meeting. I might be gone for the last meeting. So I'm going to make sure that Ray is going to be on board and he'll be chairing the first meeting for sure.
I'll be stumbling through, so you guys all have to help me.
So, uh, just that point of, that's the only comment I had. So, Ray Severi, would you like to start out?
Just a couple, I, I was talking about the signs on Clark Road for the downtown area. I drove that tonight. There was no sign that says downtown. There is a sign that says D D A area. Is it still a D D A area?
Yes.
Yeah. It's still there, okay. There's another sign that says business district.
Yep.
Yes. What is that?
Well, that would be White's Brothers music.
The only business district is your garage and the music store and, and I don't know if the restaurants open yet or not.
No.
I didn't think so. So is that an appropriate sign?
Barber shops open.
No, good barber shop, okay.
And the laundromats open.
And the nail salon. The other, the other comment I had was, driving Park Lake Road the other night, the other day, I noticed a forced sale sign on a piece of property between the road and the lake.
Yep.
Yes. Is that something the township is trying to buy or what's happening with that?
We, yeah, there is some talks going on there.
You know about that?
Yeah.
I, I was going to say I can speak on it too if you want.
Yeah, I think the municipality is actually going to have to engage in some legal action with that. Cause we had, if it's the property I'm thinking about, we had a purchase agreement in place.
It is.
It is.
It is that property. And the, and Karen put an offer in to the owner. She accepted. And then backed out and tried to resell it by upping the price to somebody else.
But we already had a purchase agreement.
And he already had, they already had a written purchase agreement, Karen did, for, on behalf of the township.
Signed by them.
This is a dump.
But we're just interested in.
Put a sale across it.
And, yeah, and having that for, you know, what we've been buying up land on the north side of the lake.
Safety, safety reasons.
So, yeah, we'll see what happens, basically.
So is that property on both sides of the road then?
It is. It's one of those weird parcels where it's one parcel, one road split by the road.
It's like that, almost exactly like that Gupta property.
I just want to give a shout out to our police departments, uh, in particular their weekly or semi-weekly, uh, report on all the calls that have been made. I, I, I always look forward to receiving those emails from Christie Colby. I, from planning perspective, they're invaluable in understanding what's going on in our communities. So if you don't get those, I would highly recommend reaching out to Christie and asking to be put on that list. And so you can learn about, uh, whether there's conflict, uh, mental health issues, uh, some of the challenges that our police and fire, uh, first responders face on a regular basis. Uh, sometimes regular for the same individuals. And so, um, it also gives you a sense of, I, um, the true depth of our community. So shout out to our police department.
Thank you, awesome.
I'd second that.
I'd second that too. Thirded or fourthed.
Yeah. For as small as they are, I think they do a fantastic job.
Yeah, they do. Yep, very good. Mark?
No.
Nothing? George?
Of course. First of all, the, the property thing definitely made this point by buying the property next to you if you don't want somebody building there.
That's one of my favorites.
That's kind of a raw statement, but in a sense, it, it kind of will reflect to make you think about, you know, the people around you. So, you know, I have, I have, in my history, had homes where, you know, I had no control over what was going on next door. And the only way for me to have that was to be able to purchase it. And of course I couldn't, so. But, you know, life changes and you, you move on. But, uh, I do struggle with the control of what I can do with what I have. And, and it is so in-depth about, during our discussions, we, we covered so many aspects of it. So I can see we do need some control of what happens. I, I do understand that. So, um, I appreciate all the comments to help me grow and learn. So I'm not just seeing through my eyes. And of course, I'm always thankful for those that work behind the scenes every day. Cause we don't, I don't personally know how many people come through that door. But I do know how, a lot of times they don't come through the door unless they're unhappy. So.
That's very true.
You usually catch the more unhappy than you do the happy. So I want to stress the goodness of our planning department and our township, because we have a great township.
Yeah, we do.
And the people that work here care about it. And the people that serve here care about it. So I'm thankful for that.
Thank you, George. Kate, did you anything?
Uh, do I go again?
You don't have to.
I had thought of something and now I don't think I can remember, but, um, I don't think I have anything additional.
Thank you. Ray?
Um, well, I pretty much got on my toadstool here already, so. I just wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to that diatribe. And, uh, know that I'm, just for the love of the community and, and my upbringing on that trail and on that lake. It's something that you can never, ever totally explain to somebody unless they've had the opportunity to partake of it. And I just think it's irreplaceable. So, there you go.
All of us are entitled to our opinions.
We are.
And I think we get along well as a group with various opinions and various thoughts about where we're coming from. So with that comment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Is there a second? How is the favor say aye? Anyone opposed? Thank you very, very much.
I was going to compliment on, or comment on a new development too because that, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not one to like change, but change is good. And that's going to really be nice.